All right. That loud, but like that. All right, I'd like to call the Thursday, May 16th city council meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilman Baji.
President.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Mayor Wheaton. Vice Mayor Eldridge.
Here.
Councilman Gilbert.
Here.
For president.
Number two, I'd like to invite Mr. Seth Parkinson to do our invocation along with the pledge of allegiance. Come on up, young man. He's a young man here going to lead us in prayer. Are you go up here, sir? Yeah, come right up here and lead us in prayer and we'll do the pledge.
All right, let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you that we get to gather here and discuss the matters of the city. I pray that you give these men here wisdom and discernment. I pray that they uplift the city and make it a better place. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Seth. Number three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, there are two changes. We're gonna add two items. First is 7A and it's considered Resolution 24513, authorizing the city manager to accept a Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation grant for infrastructure resilience project at the Coquille Water Treatment Plant and committing the city to the required matching funds. It'll be sponsored by Barry Turner. And then also we're adding 7F, consider authorizing the city manager to purchase jointly with the county by bid or negotiation property for industrial development at a total price of price per acre that the city manager deems appropriate in consultation with the county mayor. And the city manager would report back to the council the ultimate purchase price within 30 days of entry of any such contract and shall submit a budget amendment for approval at that time if funds are not currently otherwise budgeted and I'll sponsor that up.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion for the changes being made?
Move to approve, President.
Got a motion from Councilman Eric.
Second.
And I got a second from Councilman Baji. I'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Number five, old business, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on May 2nd, 2024. Do I have a motion?
The move.
Got a first and second by Councilman Eric. By Councilman Baji, go ahead and vote. Councilman Eric. Walker.
All votes correct.
He don't matter.
He don't matter.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thanks, sir. 5B, consider a sec, consider on a second final reading ordinance 0240505 and amendment to the zoning code relative to the methadone clinic in the medical service zoning district, Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members. Ordinance 0240405 amends the zoning code by deleting current provisions for methadone and similar treatment facilities and adding provisions for regional, regional medical services as a special exception are used permitted upon appeal in the MS Medical Services zoning district. The planning division has received some calls relative to an article published after first reading of this ordinance to clarify, at the February 26, 2024 meeting, the planning commission denied a request to rezone property located at 1225 South Willow Avenue from CI, commercial industrial mixed use to MS medical services for the potential location of a non-residential substitution based treatment center for opioid addiction. The planning commission did make a recommendation for a zoning code amendment as included in ordinance 0240405 after March 25th, 2024 meeting. A notice of intent to apply for certificate of need for a non-residential, non-residential substitution based treatment center for opioid addiction was published in the Wednesday, May 15th, 2024 edition of the Herald Citizen. This notice identified 1805 Burgess Falls Road as the, as the proposed location of this treatment center. I wanted to make council aware that this property is located outside of the city limits and is not subject to the city of Coquille's regulatory authority. Ordinance 0240405 has been reviewed by our city legal staff and, and recommended by the planning commission. I recommend approval of the ordinance and I'm happy to address any questions from council.
All right, at this time, do we have any opening for the public? Any questions or concerns? As you approach, can you please state your name and where you live, city or county, and you have three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Connie Bellamy and I'm gonna read my notes so I'll stay on topic. I come to this meeting as a county resident and I want to speak from the heart because I love, I've had a lifetime here and love our hometown. But I also speak from a clinical perspective. I've had years and years of career lifetime long healthcare and with responsibility and roles in large corporations across the nation as well as acute care facility, not-for-profit and for-profits. I was around when rehab units and mental health clinics or units came to hospitals or facilities. And I was around when they started going away as inpatient. And it's difficult now to even find a bed. But I'm here and I want to thank Mr. Walker, Mr. Eldridge, Mr. Gilbert, Mr. Baji for last time voicing your concerns on whether or not we need a methadone clinic. And I say that because I totally oppose it. And I can tell you that I'm glad you mentioned they've applied, put their letter of intent in the Herald Citizen yesterday. They've also submitted that letter of intent to the state, starting their certificate of needs process. And they've chosen this area on Burgess Falls Road located between Lee Seminary and Herbert Garrett. And it's in the same building next door to a sports gym where children go to baseball camp, pay $750 for one of those camps. It's across the street from a church. You know, city council to me was diligent, worked with the attorney, actually agreed, changed the zoning requirement from 1,500 feet at Cedar Recovery's request. And that wasn't good enough. They ask at last meeting that you change it again. When you did not, they're now going to the county. The county has no zoning requirements. This facility will not even have to get a business license. And I truly am praying that county leadership and all residents educate themselves about methadone and how methadone clinics function. The methadone clinics have, actually have methadone on site. You can search for methadone, you'll find instances where the DEA has gone to check the amounts in medical physician clinical eras and found it lacking. Those people are disciplined, license may be pulled, but regardless, they have it on site. And the people being treated go there, take their dosing and leave. They may drive away, they may go wherever. Point being, people need to become educated and start thinking about, once they've read all these things, F, am I over?
Yes.
I at least have to say they also give it to pregnant women and babies are addicted. It's approved to do that by FDA. So the treatment to me, and I'm sorry and I'll hush, is akin to the same FDA regs that said it's okay to give hormones and surgical or medical groups that change their definitions from gender dysphoria to gender-affirming care and say it's okay for a child that cannot drive to make the decision and change their body that they cannot make or is not irreversible. So you have to think about those things. Just educate yourself, decide do you want it in your neighborhood, across from your church or near your children.
Thank you, ma'am, for your time. Is there anybody else from the public that is not speaking? Any comments or questions from the council?
I just would like to say, before clearly.
Before your discussion, can you do your motions?
Oh.
Sorry. Do I have a motion after our discussions or what you, I'm sorry.
Before you.
Before we do ours. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
That's, I've got a motion by Councilman Walker. I have a second by Councilman Gilbert. Now are there any quick, we gotta vote or we gotta?
Discussion.
Let's discuss, then we'll vote.
All right. I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I think that part here, the, the previous zoning code had just a few items that, that allowed facilities such as this or in other facilities that kind of gave restrictions to that. We have kind of entered in a much more comprehensive list of things that here is required to be within our zoning code. And that's kind of the most layman's way to put this. And good zoning, I think I said this before, makes better neighbors and, and helps protect our houses, helps protect our neighborhoods and our cities. So hopefully, I appreciate John Ward, all the work that you guys have put into this and Annie, just trying to get a good set of zoning directions in place to make sure that we are protecting our city. And, and it's kind of obvious that they're working. So they've already moved that out. So, but thanks.
Yeah, I just piggyback what Councilman Walker said, but also thank you for clarifying exactly what we did on the last meeting so that way everybody knows, because I know there was some misconception out there. So I appreciate you standing there and clarifying and getting the truth out there and exactly what we were doing versus what we were not doing. So I appreciate that.
Just to state that we're not rezoning any, right? We're amending our code.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, well, we will vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Consent agenda A, 6A, consider approval of settlement agreement with Tennessee Riverkeeper Quality, Water Quality Control Department. Do I have a motion?
The move.
Got a, I've got a motion by Councilman Baji and a second by Councilman Gilbert. Let's vote. Any questions?
All votes correct. Five, four yes, motion carries.
New business, 7A, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance 02405112, amending the budget of the general funds, State Street Aid Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Animal Control Fund, and the Quality of Life Fund for the City of Coquille, Tennessee for the fiscal year end, June 30th, 2024. Ms. Brenda.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council members. This ordinance amends the budget for five of our funds for the year end. Most of them are housekeeping type items to prevent us from ending the fiscal year with expenditures exceeding the budget for our audit report. So for the general fund, the ordinance increases the budget of revenue by $2.2 million. We anticipate sales tax to exceed the original budget by about 380,000, building permits by 100,000, and we received an additional, the additional opioid settlement money of 160,000, and we are recognizing 250,000 in ARPA funds, interest earned on our deposits of 1.2 million, and also to recognize grants the police department received during the year of approximately 116,000. The ordinance increases budgeted expenditures by approximately 912,000. Offsetting revenues that I previously mentioned is the opioid MOU to CRMC for 160,000. The ARPA contribution that we're giving to Red Bud Village of 250,000 and the police department grants of approximately 116,000. Also during the year, we had a couple of retirements, workers' comp claims, four trucks in the police department that were not in the original budget. And we've got a leaking roof at the depot museum that we're currently getting bids on.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, wait, I got state, got more funds. Yeah, that was just. I know it's exciting stuff and you want to move on, right?
Can't wait to approve it.
Stage Street Aid, we're increasing the appropriation of paved streets by 660,000 and hopefully we can get some paving done between now and June 30th. The Solid Waste Fund, we're increasing the budget of revenues by 105,000. We expect collection fees to exceed the original budget by about 70,000. We sold retired from service garbage trucks for about 25,000 and interest earned on bank deposits of 10,000. The ordinance actually overall decreases budgeted expenditures by 306,000, but it increases budgeted operating expenditures, including materials and supplies, 20,000, fuel costs, 10,000, landfill costs, 10,000, repairs and maintenance, 10,000. The decrease in capital, overall decrease includes an increase for a pickup truck purchase for 44,000 that was not in the original budget and decreasing 400,000 for a second garbage truck that was not purchased. Then we're budgeting to get two trucks in the new fiscal year. And for the animal control fund, budget revenues is increasing by 57,000 and includes interest on deposits of 32,000 and spay and neuter fees of 25,000. The ordinance increases the appropriation for expenditures by 54,000, including the spay and neuter costs offset by the revenue of 25,000. Repairs and maintenance, 15,000, and drug supplies, 10,000. And then finally, the quality of life fund, we're appropriating 25,000 in repairs and maintenance for Dogwood Park. And we have offsetting revenues with interest and deposits of 25,000. Be happy to answer any questions. I would recommend your approval.
All right, well, any questions from the public? No? All right, well, we'll vote.
We need a motion.
Need a motion. Got one from Councilman Walker and then I've got a second from Councilman Baji. Now we'll vote. Then we got a discussion. All right, y'all got me. Any discussion?
Brenda, just appreciate all your hard work on this. I know you've been putting a lot of hard work into our city's budget. It's good to have everything in order and.
Thank you. It's a team effort. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. I was so excited. I wanted to go ahead and get to it because you're doing such a fantastic job. So I really do. All joking aside, I really do appreciate all you do and the team. All right, now we, anybody else? Now we'll vote.
All votes correct. Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
7B, consider on first reading ordinance 024-05-13, amending Title 18, Chapter 1 and 2 of the Coquille Municipal Code relative to the water and sewer rates. And this is the Quality Control, Water Quality Control Department, Mr. Barry Turner.
Thank you. Early last fall, we hired Ralph Pellis to do a rate study of our water and sewer rates. This is the fourth study that they have done for us, the first one being back in 2008. When the last study was done in 2019, the estimated capital projects for the future years there are shown in blue. The current estimates are shown in green. So our capital costs have increased greatly over the years. They're nearly double. We're actually even in the process of borrowing some additional money for, to make up the difference on the water treatment plant cost down there. In addition to capital costs going way up, operational costs have gone up as well. The chemical costs to water treatment plant went up a million dollars in a two-year period in 2021 to 2023. And they went up a little bit more this current year. We haven't closed it yet, so I can't tell you the total difference. This shows what the impact is for a typical customer. This is based on eight thou, I mean 5,000 gallons of water per month. Since 87% of our water customers also pay sewer, this is showing water and sewer combined. So the current bill on the left there, right now for 5,000 gallon, the usage for water and sewer would be $70.05. And you see the next, with this rate increase, it would go up to $80.70 and you see the next, next years. And on the right there shows the cost per gallon in cents. So over the five-year period, we go from 1.4 cents per gallon to 1.94 cents per gallon. This shows how we rank with some other towns using 5,000 gallons of usage. The, the yellow on the left is where Coquille currently stands. And the one on the right there shows how we would move up. So we don't switch places with many cities and based on what we have seen of other cities, their rates are increasing as well. So we may, may not move any or may even move to the left on that. This chart summarizes what the current rates are as well as what the rates will be each of those years, shows the volume fee, we have a storage fee and nothing cents on the bill. And fixed rate, and it shows the sewer as well. This also shows the wholesale customers, which this ordinance does not affect those wholesale customers' rates. The rate survey did affect their rates and we're going to adjust those rates per the contract, but the ordinance itself does not change that. This is the ordinance. This shows the, the water portion. And then the ordinance continues, and this is the sewer portion. And that's all I have on it as far as the slides, and I would recommend your approval on this.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. All right, we open up. Any questions, concerns from the public? None. I then, we, we vote.
Move to approve.
Got a move to approve from Councilman Walker and I've got a second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussions?
From us? Yeah, I'd like to, one, you know, thank you for all the work that's gone into this. Two, just infrastructure's near and dear to my heart and I'll, I'll take a liberty and say that everybody up here is kind of interested in this. Just without getting deep in the weeds, I think it's worth noting that the, the differences between the rate here that is, is, is being instructed to pay for cost of goods that have gone up to us and then the service, and the service and the water that we deliver, or the sewer for that matter, versus a tax increase, which we're not having. But I just wanted to point that out in the sense that, hey, as we build these infrastructure improvements, new infrastructure, this is, this is the way it gets paid for. So it's, it's different than a tax in that regard. So Barry, if you have any more comment to that, that's fine. It was not necessarily peeing it up for you, but I wanted, I wanted to point that out.
I'll let, go with what you said there. Appreciate it. Anyway.
Yeah, I just, I can appreciate the extreme costs that we're seeing, but at the same time, when you look at our water plant, when you look at our sewage facilities, we're bringing those up to really good instead of the R facilities and we're making sure that people has really good water, has good sewage treatment, make sure that we're staying up to state standards. Our, the water and sewer department team is doing our quality, water quality control has done a really good job in the city and this is just the costs that are associated with that. So appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to echo and tag on to that too. You know, it's all about capacity, right? You got to reinvest so you can increase your capacity, whether it's thorough water. And this is part of that, you know. But we appreciate all your hard work. I know you're busy.
Yeah, thank you. Absolutely.
I think I should also note that we are at or below average other cities in size comparable to us in terms of our rate structure. Is that not correct, Barry?
Yes, sir.
So I mean, we're not out of line with other cities. I think that's important that our rate players know that.
All right, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Let me go to, sorry, I lost my place there. 7C, consider awarding bid for advanced metering infrastructure, infrastructure components, Water Quality Control Department, Mr. Barry.
Well, we've received pricing on some AMI components. These items are so source items. These are, help us get further along on AMI. We'll be bringing back for some more in July, but this sort of uses up our budget remaining for that. So I recommend approval on that. These prices.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments from the public? All right, do I have a motion?
Some.
Got a motion by Councilman Gilbert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Councilman Walker. Any questions, comments from the council?
Just reiterate, these needed, the advanced metering. Can you expound on that?
The top two items there are changing registers from some of the existing meters from the old style analog meter to the new smart register. The bottom item is the radios that transmit the data to the central location.
So it's going to allow us to monitor and check meters and reduce the routes for our metering, just like that. It's all about operating more efficiently.
Yes.
And, and you mentioned Monday that we would start initiating these on the routes where the other departments are putting same meter, so we can cut down the routes faster. Is that correct?
Yes, we've met and discussed different routes to, to sort of tackle that's sort of scattered a little bit and so all, the energy department and us are on the same page with doing electric, gas and water. So the meter reader doesn't have to go one place for water and one place for electric and all that. So, yes.
All right, let's vote.
All votes correct. Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, consider approval of change order, the final balance for the 2023 South Jefferson Avenue Sewer Rehab Project, Water Control Department, Mr. Barry.
This is the South Jefferson Sewer Rehab Project, which basically went from the Squire to I-40 where we rehabbed a lot of the lines and the laterals, which we've done some of them over the few, last few years. So let's finish that out. This project ran into a few problems in conflicts with some storm sewers that we had to relay and some lines were shaped in what we had thought where we couldn't rehab them with no digs. We ended up having to dig them up, which costs more plus added to the pavement and such. So this change order adds 188,651 dollars and moves the final contract price to 2,096,861 dollars. I recommend approval on this as well.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments from the public? All right, we'll, we'll vote. So we've, got a, so moved by Councilman Gilbert and a second by Councilman Baji. Any questions, comments from the council? All right, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you, sir. 7E, consider resolution R24-05-13, authorizing the city manager to accept a Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation grant for an infrastructure resilience project at the, at the Coquille Water Treatment Plant and committing the required matching funds, Water Quality Control Department, Mr. Barry Turner.
This is for, what we've talked about, putting a generator down at the water plant that would serve, the way we're proposing is serve the plant where we could run one pump with without electricity as well as one pump at the intake. So we could operate and reduce capacity if we're out of electricity. We applied for this grant and received it. The grant amount was 3,989,962 dollars with a match of 209,998 dollars. So this commits for us to have that matching funds and I recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions from the public? We'll vote. We have a motion. Motion to approve. That's what I mean. Sorry. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Councilman Gilbert says motion to approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
And I've got a second from Councilman Baji. Now we may vote.
Let's do that.
Discussion. Now we have a discussion. Then we'll vote.
I've got a question for you. We want a discussion portion. Do we know what kind of generator this is? Is it going to be natural gas? Is it going to be diesel?
Diesel.
Any regional, I'm just, just got to cure our city while the children are over natural gas.
Well, first for that, that size generator, they don't recommend to choose natural gas and the second, it's not available down there.
Makes a deal.
Uh, where, and is there, is there a long way between the generator and where you're powered?
There, there is because we're putting the generators up at the plant and, and this project also includes putting the electric line underground. We put part of the line underground from the intake to plant. This finishes that out. So it's, it's about nine tenths of a mile, I think, maybe, maybe a full mile from there to the intake.
Will this take care of the overhead utility lines?
Yes, this puts the rest of it underground.
But you know, that was in reaction to a storm we had and lost power. So we've, this has been something Barry's been working on and we're really glad to see this kind of fruition.
Yeah.
For everybody, the, the, the intake's pretty far from the treatment plant. I'm talking a hit or two, about a mile.
Anyone else? You're good. All right, now we'll vote.
Correct. Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. 7F, consider.
James Mills.
Um, Mr. Ross, my, well, you worded that as exactly what I'm asking you all to approve, and I would ask your approval and grant that authorization.
All right, at this time, we have any comments from the public? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a so moved by Councilman Walker and a second by Councilman Eric. Do we have any, Councilman Eric, I'm sorry, Councilman Baji, do we have any questions, concern, thoughts?
If they do.
All right, we'll vote. Something about Councilman Eric on it.
All votes correct? Or yes, motion carries?
All right, a citizen's request for hearing before, we have any, yes, ma'am, if you'll come up to the podium and state your name, and you live in the city or county, and you have about three minutes.
Okay, hello, I'm Kimberly Kettles. I was residing at 1770 Lee Avenue, which the apartment, uh, the apartment complex was bought by the city for the, um, pumping station. Now I have no place to go, and I've been a month looking, a month and a half. Is there anything that can be done about that? Sword properties only, or only, um, gave three other people apartments, and they won't give apartments to anybody else. Most of the people went home to their parents because they couldn't find anything. The apartments and places around here are two and three times the amount I can pay for rent, and I can't afford any of that. Is there anything that can be done?
I'm sure, I, I can, on my behalf, I can probably, I'll talk with you afterwards and see if there's some kind of way I can help you negotiate, because I work in that field a little bit, and just see what we can come up with. I don't care to talk to you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any comments, questions from this council? All right. You got one, we got another one? I'm sorry, come back, I didn't see there, sir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. My name's Don Prince, and I live here in Cookeville, and I'm here for just a few minutes, won't take up much of your time, and, um, um, to, uh, let everyone know about what we are doing down at the Cookeville Fire Department. Starting Monday night, the, May the twentieth, we are starting up our nineteen twenty four, two thousand twenty four, uh, Citizens Fire Academy again. Uh, we're, we have four dates, May the twentieth, uh, May the twenty second, May the twenty seventh, and May the twenty ninth, with the graduation on, uh, May the thirty first. Uh, the fire department are going to cover the history of the fire department, uh, fitting gear, um, search and rescue with the smoke machine. Uh, day two would be medical services, uh, equipment and how they use, explain EMT, medical service, and how they provide the services, rope rescue, water rescue, demo rope equipment, hazmat equipment, and the needs for the hazmat expansion. Day three, which is May the twenty second, will be extrication, which is very awesome and quite fun, too, actually, get to cut up cars and things like that. Day four, which will be May the twenty ninth, uh, will be flowing, uh, the water, hand lines, uh, ladder climb, if anybody wants to do these, and naturally, we're having everyone sign a consent form to be involved. And then on day five, which will be the thirty first, so it's two days next week, three days the week after. This is kind of an experiment for the Citizens Academy again, because at one time we did it, and then we stopped doing it for a while, but we're bringing it back in, and we're very lucky to have sixteen people that are going to go through the first class, and then we've probably got thirty-five or forty more people that want to, to be in the following class. And so, uh, I just wanted to let you guys know, uh, and invite you to come down any one of these nights and say hello and, and meet the people that are going through the academy, and, uh, it's really a, a, quite a thing to see, because I was lucky enough back in, to be in the first class at two thousand and one, and so it's, it's really cool. So we invite you to come down any night you want to. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. How tall's the ladder going to be?
Good one.
How tall's the ladder going to be? Uh, you got to have a consent.
Well, that lets you go a hundred if you want to. Thank you, I think you have sure, thank you for the fire department.
Absolutely, sounds like a fun time. Anybody else? Anything from council? I call this meeting adjourned. Have a great night.